Good evening. This is the December 8th meeting of the Needham Select Board. I'm Mo Handel, Chair. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with current state regulations and is being recorded. Public access to this meeting does not ensure that there will be public participation unless required by law. This particular meeting will have the opportunity for public comment during the tax classification hearing. First, we'll confirm that all members of the Select Board are present. When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Mary Ann Cooley?
Here.
Matt Brolly?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Here.
Dan Matthews?
Here.
Thank you. Anything shared or stated at this meeting will be matter of public record. All supporting materials for this meeting, including the agenda, are available on the town's website, www.NeedhamMA.gov unless otherwise noted. The ground rules for this meeting are designed to allow for an accurate public record. Every speaker on our agenda will be introduced. After they conclude their remarks, each board member will be asked for any comment, questions, or motions. As a first order of business, I would ask for a motion that this meeting be continued to the board's next meeting of Tuesday, December 22nd, in the event of a technical problem making the Zoom meeting not feasible. Is there such a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Here, or I?
Matt Brolly?
Aye.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The ayes have it. That brings us to the first item on our agenda, which is the tax property classification hearing. Here for staff are David Davison, Chip Davis, and from the assessors, do we have anybody from the assessors, Sandy?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have all the assessors and the administrative assistant.
Yeah. Thank you. Is Arthur Torres here?
Right here.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thanks.
Okay, who is presenting?
I am.
Please proceed.
Thank you, Mo.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. This is the Assessors' Report for Fiscal Year 2021. The third quarter of Fiscal Year 21 will be the first tax bill that is produced using the values from the new Tyler Technologies I Ask Kim software. It is the capstone to a project that has been underway since the downsizing of the Department of Revenue's Division of Local Services several years ago. Overall, the average change in value for all types of real estate in the conversion was less than 1%. The efforts of the entire assessing staff through all of 2019 and 2020 led to this result, which was well below the 2.5 discrepancy rate called for in the conversion contract. Our conversion accuracy was extensively reviewed by DOR staff throughout the summer and early fall. We are beginning to see tangible feedback from the small, so-called small house zoning changes instituted two years ago. While some builders appear to have changed their game in that they are now buying older homes to upgrade, add to, and sell is what could be termed as semi-new construction. The tiered-down rebuilt cycle is not abated. The current sales price boom for all new construction continues. It appears the new zoning regulations will have no detrimental effect on the market. In what could be termed a more reluctant move, the assessing department contracted with a new vendor to gather field data on residential new construction. The fact that this vendor was in place prior to the onset of the current COVID health crisis proved to be a godsend. In light of the fact that the technology that they employ allowed complicated properties to be measured without actually getting close to the property itself being measured. Freed from the task of pulling up a tape measure, the field staff was able to use their time, normally use physically, use the time that they normally would spend using physically inspecting the properties. They gathered information on interior listings from both the new vastly improved permitting system, online sources. Additionally, to track interior renovations normally updated by onsite inspections, the office innovatively shifted gears yet again by dropping letters at these sites asking owners to respond as to the progress of the projects underway. The bottom line is that this effort will hopefully avoid a diminution of new growth going forward in spite of the pandemic restrictions on the staff. As with all aspects of COVID-19 strategy, new methods for gathering sales information has to be established since onsite visiting opportunities were extremely limited. The accuracy of our data on properties that changed hands in 2019 is essential to statistical analysis that needs to be submitted to the Department of Revenue annually. Again, the staff, both onsite and working remotely, use publicly available information in addition to close scrutiny of building records to account for improvements that might warrant an increase or decrease in the current assessed values as it relates to the 2019 sales price. Needham Cross the Projects currently on the horizon. In addition to the planned revitalization and expansion of the former Avery Manor property, we're the wolf to continue expansion of the personal property account inventory. Unfortunately, we've already been advised a number of smaller accounts will become economic victims of the virus. Values of established commercial properties have moved slightly upwards for the seventh year in a row in what for calendar 2019 appeared to be a stable commercial industrial sector. Fiscal Year 2022 will undoubtedly tell a different story. Fiscal Year 21 values are based on calendar 2019 economic activity. While many landlords will be cushioned by leases that obligate 2020 payments from their tenants, they assure to be necessary economic concessions that they will need to make to retain these tenants going forward. The effects of these possibilities are not predictable at this time. What is certain is that properties that function in service businesses like Needham Hotels will require severe downward adjustments based on the pandemic-induced reduction in income attributable to the property. To their credit, after rounding an accelerated learning curve for working the combined onsite remote environment, the staff has been meeting benchmarks in all aspects of assessment activities. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Walter. This is a public hearing. So I'm going to ask the Select Board if they have any questions or clarifications before I open this up to the public. Do any of the Select Board members have any questions or comments before we open this up to the public?
Not at this time. For me.
Anyone else? Fine, thank you. Then we will open this up for public comment. Is there anyone here from the public who wishes to be heard on this matter? Please signify by raising your hand if you know how to do it in Zoom so that our staff person can bring you in. Do you see anyone with a hand raised?
I do not, Mr. Chairman.
All right, if somebody comes in later and has a question, Mary Ann Cooley?
Mo, I am just thinking, we did receive at least one public comment ahead of the meeting with somebody asking us to move the maximum amount to commercial properties that was possible. I think that person probably didn't realize that we already have a formula in place, which in fact does move the most significant portion of the tax burden to commercial properties, so that in fact is already done to ease the burden on our residential homeowners. It does create a more significant burden on our commercial property owners, and they are also in a challenging time, so it would be unfair not to acknowledge that on their behalf as well.
Thank you for pointing that out, Mary Ann. Matt Brolly and then Dan Matthews.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just on that. And I'm not talking about with this vote, but I think from what I hear and what we know that's going on in the marketplace with the business struggling, that it might be a time just to look at, not this year, but some type of shift back towards the commercial, because right now at the 1.75, I just, I think it's something that we can think about or talk about. I never thought I'd be saying this, but you know, with the pandemic, there might be a way, based on the report, that we're going to see, we don't know what's going to happen, but we're going to see difficulty in that sector, and there may be a way or may not be a way to help out. So just something that I want to put out there looking at the numbers. Thank you.
Thank you. Dan Matthews and then John Bullion.
Yeah, and thank you, Walter, and members of the board for coming in and for the report. And already, this is the first time I've seen you at one of these things, so I hope you're you're enjoying your new responsibilities, because we're greatly pleased that you signed up and participated. So thank you.
Thanks. Looking forward to it.
Okay, and yeah, I mainly just wanted to plow over some of the basics, because not everybody that watches this hearing is familiar with the history of it, which is that we do, at this meeting, this is sort of our annual meeting with the Board of Assessors, so we get the kind of, you know, and the kind of overview that Walter provides is very helpful, because the department really puts a lot of work into what they do, and it's good to have a report of this kind. But the legal function of this is actually more narrow technical decision, which has to do with whether or not, in layman's terms, what if any surcharge the selectmen will place on the business assessed properties in town, the CIP properties, as opposed to the residences. It's basically a shift of a certain portion of the tax burden from the residences to the businesses, and to that extent, it helps reduce the residential tax with certain appointments raises that proportionally on business. There are many towns in the state that have the same tax rate for businesses and for residences, but that is generally not true in communities that have a substantial business presence. And in those which where the business community is a substantial part of the local economy, there is generally a shift, and frequently the shift is at the maximum. And Needham is in that latter category. We use the maximum we have for quite a few years had the maximum allowable shift, which is basically a 75% surcharge on the business properties, which acts as a modest reduction, not as much because our, proportionately, because our residences are at this point something on the order of 80% of our total valuation in town. But it is a certain amount of relief, particularly for the for long-time homeowners that may be on limited fixed incomes or other limitations. So it is, it is the help. I would, so I think that may be helpful to the writer that Mary Ann spoke of, who asked that we increase the tax. We are already at the maximum shift. We have been, and based on the vote, which I assume, I assume we're going to get a recommendation on the form of vote for this, to stay at that level for the current fiscal year. That, and then, but to speak to Matt's point, and I know that this is tough, and we have a lot of businesses that are struggling, but just, and if it comes to this, we want to hear things and think carefully about them. But my own experience with this is that for the business community, for businesses that are sound and have staying power, the property tax is actually a, it's money, but it's a modest charge to their, part of their cost of doing business. So changing this is not really going to materially affect the staying power of any of the businesses that we have here. Now, the other side of the coin is there are a lot of businesses, we've talked a lot about the restaurant sector, but there are others as well that are really stressed by anything, anyone involved with in-person retail is really stressed in the COVID environment. And town wants to try to do what it can to help those businesses, and we had to do some, we have done some creative thinking, we've provided some relief that I hope has been helpful, and we had to be willing to do more, because I think we're in for at least another six months of substantial reduction of public activity, and even after that, a lot of things are going to be, have been dislocated, are going to be slow to come back, there are going to be waves that things have changed that people are going to need to work with. We value our business community, we want to work carefully and fairly with them. But I'm just sort of saying, I don't think this particular area is a tool that would help, particularly since if you move the other way, you're going to hear that it only brings opposition from the residences that will feel, we got plenty of residential people, homeowners that are struggling too, let's not, let's not shift it back that way. So we, I think that we do, I agree with Matt, that we do have to find ways to help the business community within our means. I'm just, and I'm not saying foreclosing having further talk about this, but this is a, that is probably not the right tool to use to help. There are other things that we should and can do. Thank you.
Thank you, Dan. That brings us to John Bullion, who has some comments and remarks.
Thank you. Well, referencing the email that we did get relative to the tax classification hearing tonight, the gist of it is thank you for the opportunity to comment in advance on the property tax classification hearing taking place on December 8th. We have lived in Needham for 21 years since August of 1999. We purchased our home at a much more modest price than homes are selling in Needham today. We have seen our taxes continue to rise, which are now at the level of over $1,000 a month. This level is becoming unaffordable as we are approaching retirement age, and my business has been severely impacted by the effects of COVID-19 on the overall economy. So I'm not going to read the rest of it, but I will say that I am in agreement that residential property taxes have been going up too fast, and you know, there are many people, more people that are struggling during this period of time. However, if you look back a year when we were having the same property tax classification meeting, I spoke at that time about how looking to try to figure out a way of slowing, not reversing, not stopping the rate of tax increases, because I know we can't do that. However, slowing the rate of increase, and I don't know, and clearly, we're in a pandemic, clearly there are budgetary, extraordinary budgetary challenges that we are facing as the leadership of the town and town management. And, you know, people are looking for more help, more relief in what will be a down economy and a less, lesser revenue for the town to operate on. So I get that, but I still want to point out that what this pandemic has shown is that there are people that are in need, especially when we heard that from the school department, the school committee, almost 1,000 children are in need of food help. There's a, you know, and these aren't just people that live in affordable, you know, homes in this town. They're people who are middle-class. They're people who, because of the economy rage, the pandemic raging through sectors of this economy, it's hurting a lot of people and impacting a lot of people. So, yep, Matt, I get it. I understand there are businesses. I'm a small business as well. Retail is down, and this is a tough time for everybody. And we, like Dan said, we have another six months, I think, of very difficult times ahead of us. So I know this isn't the time to, you know, to talk about reducing the tax burden of the residents, but I certainly don't want to increase it. And, you know, so that's where I am. I think that, you know, we're in a tough position. We have, we have costs that we have to pay for. We have extraordinary costs that we're being challenged to pay for at this time, and there are many of these costs that we just don't know how we're going to pay for, but we're working to figure it out. So thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Mr. Brolly?
Yes, thank you. Just to respond, and we're not looking to debate it tonight. My point is that I'm open. I think a year ago, or, you know, we would never talk about touching the shift. When you look at this year, I think it's the largest year-to-year increase of the businesses at 4.89%. So my point is, is that as we move forward, it just might be something that is on the table. I spoke with business owners who obviously they're triple net leases, so they end up paying the taxes through the landlord. And obvious, and I agree with John, taxes are going up. There's affordability issue for residents. So I'm not trying to pit one against the other. My point is, just to keep an open mind as we look forward at the shift, as it used to be, I think, to me, not touchable. I think with these unprecedented times, it might be more touchable. Whether or not we do anything, that's, you know, discussion for another day. Tonight, I'm comfortable with the rate that's proposed. I think that makes sense, but something I would like to keep an open mind on.
Thank you. I think it's a fair statement that we're all acutely aware of the burden that taxes place on both residents and businesses. And I do think it probably makes sense for us from time to time to review that shift and make sure that the burden we're placing or relieving on either side of that equation is equitable and that the costs that we cause the town to incur over the coming months and years reflect the ability of our residents and businesses to carry that burden. I think that's a fair statement. Is there a motion to retain the same shift as last year? Is there a motion to do that? And who would like to make the motion? Mr. Matthews?
Just a question, Mr. Chairman. Do we, and maybe I should be, I'm working with my equipment here. Do we have the specific form of the motion recommended to?
I'll read it to you, Mr. Matthews, and then you can make the motion. How would that?
I can see it. Is this the motion that you want the Select Board to establish the residential factor of .8861 for the purposes of setting the fiscal year 2021 tax rate?
Is that correct? Yes.
I will offer that motion.
I will second it, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on Mr. Matthews' motion? Mr. Matthews?
Yes, yes. This, following on the prior remarks, this is the technical language, as I understand it, required to implement the continued practice of the 75% surcharge that I referenced to before, which is the maximum allowed shift from residential to business allowed for the town.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Aye.
Matt Brolly? John Bullion?
Yes.
Mr. Matthews?
Aye.
The chair votes yes, so the ayes have it. Thank you. That closes the public hearing on property tax. Mr. Bullion, do you have a motion? On consent and?
Yes, I'd like to move the appointments and the consent. Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there a second to Mr. Bullion? Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Matt Brolly?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
The chair votes yes. That is unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to the next item on our agenda, which is to approve the sale of notes. Would like to invite Dave Davison, Assistant Town Manager and Director of Finance, to discuss this with us. I understand Evelyn Poness, our town treasurer, is also here.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if we could have Evelyn join us.
Sandy, can you bring this Poness in? Thank you. Thank you very much. And just a technical question, Dave, while we're waiting. Can this motion all be done as one, or do you need separate motions?
Mr. Chair, where the the motions were made available publicly on the website and and have been printed previously for administrative ease, the board can move all six motions if they're agreeable.
Thank you very much. Dave, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're here to report that the town has sold a note, a four-month note for $2.8 million. It's a bond anticipation note. And from the efforts of our town treasurer Evelyn Poness and our financial advisors at Hilltop, the town was successful in receiving four bids for the note. I'm pleased to report that although on the earnings side for the town, for its local receipts, investment income is down because interest rates are down. So our revenue is not as high. Conversely, our interest rate that we pay for on our bonds and notes are also down. The interest rate that we received was a 1.75% with a premium of $11,396, which basically means that that's incorporated into the 1.75% interest rate, which generates a gross interest of $15,925. However, the lender is also giving the town $11,396, which effectively means that the true interest rate that the town is paying on the note is less than a half a percent. It's a .4977, which is the basis for the award. I should note that this is the lowest interest rate the town has seen on its notes since 2015, and at that time, we saw an interest rate of .4. The note, when it matures, there are two projects that are incorporated into this note. One is the Williams School, which we're awaiting the School Building Assistance Authority to complete its final audit of the project costs so it can determine which share of the remaining expenses that it will be paying. And at that time, we will be paying off this note. We also have the balance, which is partial financing for the public safety building projects, which totals $1.6 million, and the plan is to pay that note off in full as well. Both are keeping with the previous plans in terms of financing these projects, and we are happy to take any questions from the board.
Thank you very much, Dave. Are there any questions from any member of the board? Any comments from any member of the board? Mr. Matthews?
Just to thank Dave, Evelyn, and everyone involved in this, this is, it goes through here quickly, but it's a lot of work, and it's done right, and it saves money for the taxpayers and helps us, helps us get things done that we need to for the town. So thank you all.
Yes, I would add that this does not happen by accident. People do not knock on our door and try to save us money. We owe Dave and Evelyn a great debt of thanks for keeping us in this situation. Is there a motion? John Bullion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the that the board approve the sale of, that's listed in the agenda fact sheet, motions A, B, C, D, E, and F, and on the town website.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Aye.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Matt Brolly?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. The ayes have it. It's unanimous. Thank you. That brings us to the next item on our agenda.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
At this point, you would begin signing multiple documents, but where we're doing the meeting remotely, all the documents have been signed electronically by you all, which you each individually gave authorization to do so, but still keeping with the requirement, our town clerk, Teddy Eaton, is observing your actions and say that you did not do this under duress, and I just want to so acknowledge that Teddy Eaton was an observance as well.
Dave, do you need a public statement from each of us that we have signed, or is that sufficient?
Nope, your written statements are sufficient.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, and thank you very much, Teddy.
Thanks, Teddy.
For being here and verifying that. I'm scrolling through my packet, which is on an iPad, so I can't find the next pages, but I do know that the next item is a Director of Public Works for a series of three, two sign changes and a public works snow and ice preparation update. So I'd like to three, two sign changes and a public works snow and ice preparation update. So I'd like to invite Karis to join us. Karis Lustig, Acting Director of Public Works, welcome.
Hi.
Hi.
It's page one twenty-nine, Mo, if that helps.
That helps me a lot. Thank you.
There you go. There's bookmarks in there if you, if you have access to those.
Yeah, I just figured out how to do it. I'm a little slow on some of this stuff. Thank you. Go ahead, Karis. The floor is yours.
One twenty-nine, one twenty-nine, Karis?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Okay, sorry.
It's okay.
The first item that I have today is a recommendation from the TMAC to make a change to the Chestnut Street at Oak Street intersection. Basically, the change is right now, there's a lagging green as you travel northbound on Chestnut Street. And the committee had found it to be confusing, so they looked into whether or not we could have a dedicated left-hand lane. And there was not enough room for a dedicated left-hand lane, so they have decided to remove the lagging green. So now the both signals will, will turn red at the same time. And so that's the change that they're recommending.
Thank you. Now, all of us here use that, that intersection at one time or another, so I don't know if there are any questions or not. Are there any questions or comments?
Makes sense.
Thank you. Hearing none. This is not a public hearing, so I will look for a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the board vote to approve and sign the notice of traffic regulation permit number TS twenty dash twelve dash oh eight, the amendment of existing traffic signal regulation permit number B dash one five zero zero A, Chestnut Street and Oak Street by eliminating the lag green phase for Chestnut Street northbound.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on the motion? Is there a second? You seconded it, Mr. Burley, right? Uh, any, Mary Ann?
It, it occurs to me, Karis, I have a question that is not specifically this, but related. I was turning, making that left-hand turn the other day into the hospital parking lot, right, if I'm oriented properly. And I noticed that the hospital has made some changes in that lot, and it looked like there was another entrance to the lot that may not have been intended to be an entrance, but that a vehicle who was driving southbound toward me turned right into the heart, into the parking lot, not through the entrance, but through the new area. I don't know what, what we can do about that. It was confusing. I was almost hit by the car turning in. And so I just mentioned that. Sorry about that.
That's okay, Mary Ann.
I think that was the construction, Mr. Chair. I think that was the construction entrance tent that they had, and maybe they never put it back.
No, it was a new change.
It was a new change, okay.
Yeah.
So we can, we, you gonna follow up on that, I guess, Karis? Thanks.
I'll follow up on that.
Um, I, it's my place to ask that, but I will. The next item, oh, we, we had the motion, but we haven't had the vote. So we'll come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
Uh, John Bullion?
Yes.
Uh, Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. Go ahead, Karis.
Um, the next item that you have is also a recommendation from the TMAC, and it's to make some small adjustments to the central Ave at Great Plain Ave traffic signal timing. We do have in the future capital, a larger reconfiguration of that intersection and upgrade of the traffic signals. This was a small study that was done to try to alleviate the congestion that we see on Central Ave. It's not going to, you know, completely change the way that the intersection interacts, but it's going to hopefully move and process traffic a little bit faster than what it has before. The main changes are just some tweaks to the timing as well as a slight shortening of the pedestrian phase based on a study that we had done about how long it takes to cross that intersection.
Thank you very much. John Bullion has a question?
Uh, thank you, Karis. The, you know, I, I think all of us travel that intersection regularly. One of the things that seems to be the most challenging of probably the many things that are, that are challenging for that intersection is when you're heading on Central towards the Newman School, and you're looking to take a left on the Great Plain Avenue. There is not a dedicated left turn signal or lane. It's a straight or left. And, and because of the volume of traffic that's coming from, you know, from Central the other way, from Dover and, and out in that area, it can be sometimes challenging to take that left. And people have mentioned that to me over the years. I've witnessed that myself. And I don't know whether anything is contemplated in that regard to provide, say, a left turn arrow, some sort of a lead left. And, and again, the difficulty is that, you know, there may be one car out of five or one car out of ten that takes a left there. So thoughts? Thank you.
Yeah, there are going to be large geograph, geometric changes that will be made to that intersection to accommodate different traffic patterns. I believe right now the road width is not sufficient in order to have an additional dedicated left-hand turn.
Thank you. Mary Ann Cooley?
Karis, my recollection is that that is the next intersection that is on our list of intersections to target. We're currently working on West at Highland, and this one is the one that's, that's after that is sort of our next priority. So, so, John, it's an important factor, but hopefully coming somewhat soon in our lifetime.
Oh, oh, good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any other comments? Do we have a motion?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll move that the board vote to approve and sign the notice of traffic regulation permit number TS twenty dash zero dash one two dash zero eight A, the amendment of existing traffic signal regulation permit number B dash one six five two, Central Ave at Great Plain Avenue, by revising the signal timing of the Central Ave northbound and southbound approach phases and exclusive pedestrian phase.
Second. Thank you. Uh, Matt Borelli, seconds. That brings us to the, oh, any discussion on the motion? That brings us to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Aye.
Matt Borelli?
Aye.
John Bullion?
Aye.
Uh, Dan Matthews?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much, Karis. There's one more. Um, and I think this is a subject of great interest, and I think you've done a lot of work on this, so please let us know what's happening here.
I guess I speak to you after having two official snow events already, this snow season. But I wanted to provide an update on our snow program this year. I think just as a refresher as to what our program is, but also a little bit in preparation to things that may end up being different this year, partially due to our response to the pandemic, and then also partially because of some market conditions that we're seeing. So in Needham, we have had a pretty aggressive approach to snow removal. We really have a policy when there is substantial snowfall to have a a curb-to-curb removal program, which we don't know is, is the case in, in our neighboring communities, but it's something that we've prided ourselves on having in Needham. And in order to do that, we have run a program that is about fifty percent Needham staff and about fifty percent contracted staff. And it does rely a lot on using very heavy equipment to be able to really push that snow and stack that snow on the side of the road. We partner our staff with a contractor and a small truck with a large truck on every route. So that way, when we have the heavier snow, the smaller truck can kind of clear the midline, and then the heavier truck stacks the snow on the side of the road. What we have found this year is, and we've been experiencing this for a few years, it's just this year it's gotten worse, is we're having difficulty attracting contractors to come and work for us over the snow season. We have had a few, some turnover in some of our older contractors who've been with us for a longer period of time. And when they've turned the business over, either whomever they've turned it over to, or they've dissolved the business, has decided not to continue with snow removal. We've had a series of mild winters, and the warmer winters means less snow money. So people are finding it less advantageous to commit their equipment to a snow program. And instead, they're finding that they can actually get a lot of work done over the winter as part of these open winters that we've been having. So the net result of that right now in Needham is that we are down about sixteen pieces of equipment. We like to have about forty-five, so that's a fairly significant reduction. And some of the equipment that we've been accepting has been smaller than our normal, like what we would like. We would like the heavy backhoes and loaders and large six and ten-wheel dump trucks. Instead, we're getting more like large Ford vehicles or, or smaller pickups. And basically what that means for this upcoming season is that we still anticipate that we'll be able to facilitate public safety during snow events, but it's not going to be to the level of efficiency that I think people in the town have come to expect. We're going to have to reduce several of our routes to just one piece of equipment. So what that means is that if there's a breakdown or any issue, we have to reassign and reevaluate. And that just takes time. It's not as fast as if you just have one piece of equipment down and the second piece of equipment keeps on going. Also, like I mentioned, we are not going to have as much heavy equipment. So what may end up happening is that we may clear the rights of way during the snow event and then come back and push the snow back later with our heavy equipment, since we won't have as much to spread out over town. What that will mean for most, for residents, is that they may clear their driveways and we may come back later and push the snow back into the curb, which will then block their driveways again. So I think we're really asking for people to just be aware that we're dealing with these challenges, and we think that we can still provide a good service and still keep the roads open for commuters and, and everyone else who needs them. But that it might take a little bit longer and that there might be a little more inconvenience than what they're used to. I did want to mention, we have made a few changes to our program to accommodate the COVID protocols. So we have actually built, we're building a window in our DPW, so contractors no longer have to go in the building, so that will help keep them separate from our staff. And we're also trying to figure out sleeping accommodations for staff, so that way they can rest during large, heavy snowstorms and still be able to be comfortable and be able to sleep safely. So those are sort of the, the in-the-road preparations. On the sidewalks, we do run our school sidewalk routes when we have a full snowplow event. And we are still trying to pursue the Snow and Ice Pilot for the downtown. We've been working with the Economic Development Coordinator on communicating with the businesses, and that program is really a cleanup of the downtown, so businesses are still required to shovel the sidewalks in front of their property, but we would come in when the business, business area is not being occupied because we're coming in with slightly larger equipment, and then we would do a clearing. So we are looking to pursue that pilot this year as well.
Thank you very much, Karis. That's a very complex and challenging activity. I think most of us have had the chance to observe it closer up, and I know it's harder this year. So thank you so much. Are there any comments or questions for Karis? Matt Borelli?
Thank you, Karis. Two things. First of all, on the downtown, uh, snow removal, we've gotten, I think individually and as a group, great feedback about that, what we're gonna do, and very positive. So I'm glad that in this time, we can actually accommodate these business owners. Just had a question after this storm, and, you know, these, they're like ice events, right? You get the thick snow, and then unfortunately when it melts, it really freezes and gets everything very slick. I did notice at the high school and around Pollard, the sidewalks were icy, especially coming down, you know, Admiral Gracie. Is there a tool that we have to, to, I know we do it for the, the streets, but what's our plan and protocol for ice melt on the sidewalks of the schools in general? Is that done by machine? Is that done by hand? Well, how do we handle that?
So salting sidewalks is extremely labor-intensive compared to salting streets, mostly because the hoppers are so small on the sidewalk tractors that we use. We actually have to follow that piece of equipment with a truck and load it. I think it's every five hundred feet you have to load one of these sidewalk tractors. So we don't typically do any salt treatment unless we're getting into a more extreme icing event, like where we don't think they'll be melting. So I guess we would also be, you know, encouraging people who, you know, treat their, you know, shovel their sidewalks and treat their sidewalks as well, because it just, the amount of time it would take to accomplish that task, it usually has a natural melt. But you are right, we have been experiencing more variable weather with these in-between storms where we're not really sure if we're gonna end up with, you know, like this last one, are we gonna get eight inches of snow, or are we gonna get a couple inches and some freeze thaw that we got this time?
Okay. Yeah, if we could check that high school, that's what I just noticed today. But other than that, yeah, people do have to be, I think, more vigilant about outside of their houses when that ice is over. So, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions or comments? Thank you very much, Karis. Appreciate it. Oh, Mary Ann?
Karis, I'm wondering, I, I know that we're doing the sidewalk program for downtown. Are we able to do the sidewalk program also in the Heights or not for the Heights businesses, that little strip?
So right now, it's a very limited pilot in the downtown with some areas that are basically adjacent to areas we normally clear. We do clear handicap ramps throughout town, so that is, it's not the intersections we do clearing, especially because you get larger windrows around those intersections that kind of become harder to, to shovel. The pilot program right now is really to test out a few things, but one is a piece of equipment that we purchased. That's like a, it's like a ride-on mower, except it's a ride-on blower, so it's sort of better than using a hand snow blower, but not as cumbersome as our sidewalk tractors to see how that piece of equipment functions. I think after the pilot, if, if we get some sizable accumulation, we can really see what it takes. We plan on putting together a proposal for a more comprehensive program, whether that's a comprehensive program that the town manages or that the businesses manage, but we would be able to get some information about what that program would look like.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any closing comments or remarks? Thank you. Thank you very much, Karis. You're always welcome here. Thank you. That brings us to the town manager portion of our agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually asked Karis to stay for my first item, because she can provide some more backup. But one of the things that we've run into over the last few years is one of the, one of the reasons that, as Karis talked about, where we and every other community has their signboards out that say, we need plow drivers, we need plow drivers, and you see them everywhere. We're all experiencing this, and there are a number of reasons. Some of them that Karis mentioned, others that it can be more lucrative because you don't have to ensure register your equipment if you leave it at a major, Shopper's World parking lot, and it stays there. And there's, there's a lot of factors at play. But one factor is that in twenty eighteen, the Inspector General changed the interpretation of, of Chapter thirty B, which exempts the snow plowing from the Uniform Procurement Act. That's not to say we don't go through a practice, but it's, it's effectively separated plowing and removal and hauling, which most people would not even associate. There need to be three verbs to this activity. So essentially, we plow the snow, and the next day, we come through with equipment that either we own or that, that we contract for, and we remove it in a lot of places, especially when there's major, major storms at a lot of the dangerous intersections. We remove it in the downtown and the Heights. So there's a lot of places where we remove it. And so the IG has determined now that removal and hauling of the way of the snow is not exempt. And this goes, Mr. Chair, even to the level of if we had some contractors who had folks who might want to shovel, we have to procure that because, unless we hire them on as staff, because shoveling is removal. So in the past, when this happened, we used to use the same people who plowed to haul, and hauling can be more, it, it can be seen as advantageous for the contractors because it's, it's done in the day, and it's, and it's work that they can get by having a contract with us, they can get even more work. And when we have to go out to bid, some of them either won't, won't go out to bid, or they're not, they're not chosen. So we really feel like, uh, this is being experienced by everybody, but Karis has just brought this to our attention, is that we have to try to attack all of these reasons why we're not getting the equipment. So the thought is to ask our legislative delegation to to propose a bill that would add snow removal and snow hauling to the exemption, so that if it even helped a little bit, as Karis said, I mean, if we got two trucks back from the sixteen, we would be in a lot better condition. Karis, did I leave anything out there that you would want to add?
So you're seeking authority from the, the board to contact our legislatures?
Let you propose this legislation.
Yes. Um, any comments or questions for Kate? Mary Ann Cooley agrees. Oh, you raising your hand, or you agreeing that we should?
Thumbs up.
Thumbs up all around, Mr. Chair.
I don't think that passes for a motion. Have a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that the board authorize the town manager to contact the town legislative delegation and propose an amendment to Mass. legislative delegation and propose an amendment to Mass General Law, Chapter 30B, to include snow removal and snow hauling in the exceptions listed under Section 1B17.
Very well stated, Mr. Borelli. Thank you. Motion's been made and seconded. We come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley.
Yes.
John Bullion.
Yes.
Matt Borelli.
Yes.
Dan Matthews.
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. So the thumbs indeed do have it. It is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, and thank you, Karis.
Thanks, Karis. That brings us to the next item.
Here, this item is requested by the planning board, which in its decision on the Heather Lane definitive subdivision and the Heather Lane Extension Residential Compound and definitive subdivision has requested restrictive covenants and conservation restriction as part of its decision to allow these projects to move forward. Essentially, the restrictive covenant set forth the responsibilities and the future actions of the homeowners with respect to the subdivision, recognizing that it's not being, it's not a public way. It's not being constructed as a public way. And that, you know, who has rights to pass and repass and those sorts of things. You've seen these in other subdivisions that we have proposed. The other is the conservation restriction is this property abuts the Charles River and it's specifically intended to protect the river and the resource area around the river. And the map is included for that in your pack.
Thank you. This is a subdivision off of Chestnut Street near the river. Thank you very much. Any comments, questions, or is there a motion?
I would move that the board approve and sign the Heather Lane Declaration of Restrictive Covenants dated December 1st, 2020. The Heather Lane Extension Declaration of Restrictive Covenants dated December 1st, 2020. And the Heather Lane Conservation Restriction to the Town of Needham, Massachusetts dated December 1st, 2020.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion? Harry Nunn, we come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley.
Yes.
Matt Borelli.
Yes.
John Bullion.
Yes.
Dan Matthews.
Yes.
The chair votes yes. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. That brings us to the capital part of the presentation, right, Kate?
Yes, the presentation we made at your last meeting focused on the items that were recommending in FY22. And the chart that since I got printed on 11 by seven and it's hard to read, I'm sure is not an easy read on a, something like the size of a tablet. But if you, if anybody does want a copy of it blown up, we'd be happy to provide it. And this is our recommendations in the Tier One category for items to be proposed for funding through tax levy, through debt and through other warrant articles. We did amend the FY22 submission in recognition of the project for the completion of the public safety buildings, which we had not included in the prior version. And this is still a work in progress and we should have updated information on the costs associated with that project early February. Dave, do you have anything that you would want to share with respect to this proposal for the board's review? And I would also say, final vote, we would ask for the board to take a final vote at your meeting on December 22nd.
And there were any questions or Dave, do you have anything you want to say?
Other than what the town manager has already conveyed to the board, there was one other change. There was included in the plan at your last meeting, $50,000 for traffic improvements. That was an error. The department did not request funding for FY2022, but in fiscal years, FY23 through 26. So there was a slight reduction in the capital request for FY22.
Mr. Chair, if I could just say one more thing, there are several major items that are awaiting further study. So we know that we'll be doing, excuse me, Mr. Chair, more conversation about the school master plan, for instance, the public works facility. But I would say, absent a decision on the Emery Grover Building, we're going to need to start making some improvements to that structure in the coming years.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Before we go to the next item. Kate, do you have anything else in this portion of the report?
I do. Just have a couple of things. The first one, I was going to ask Katie if she could give us a brief update on the Over Zero workshop that concluded last week?
Great, thank you. And yes, the town partnered with the nonprofit organization Over Zero to host an online workshop. I know a number of you were there. It was entitled Countering Hate and Fostering Inclusion in Needham Through Rapid Response and Resilience. And before I get into how it went and what was discussed, I want to thank the members of the planning committee who were very involved in that. So it was a collaborative effort for the select board. It was Mr. Matthews, the town manager, myself, and Sandy Sincaada added support for the town. Rebecca Drill from the Needham Diversity Initiative, Marlene Schultz from the Human Rights Committee, and Nicole Argo Benitzak from Over Zero. I'll also thank the rest of her team who actually facilitated each of the sessions. Samantha Owens, Tanmai, Vamula Polly, and Akemini Ekbo. And so that was our, our team and actually the work continues. So thanks to everyone for all the work. And so over the last three Tuesdays, leading up to last week, about 51 people gathered every week for two and a half hours on Zoom. And I'd say there was very consistent participation across all three sessions, which I think speaks to the commitment of the attendees and hopefully to the quality of the workshop. And the group of 51 was really a broad cross section of the Needham community. We had board and committee members from across issue areas and town staff, school staff, a lot of representatives from community-based organizations, clergy, diverse background of race, ethnicity, and religion in the room. And I raised that because it really was one of our primary goals for the workshop was to bring people together from all across the Needham community to start building relationships and introducing people to one another. Unfortunately, on Zoom, but I actually think it worked better than than I had anticipated. And really, the focus of the workshop and the content was first to get an understanding of how social norms influence our behavior and using that information to then more effectively use communication as a tool against identity-based harm or discrimination or violence. In the workshops, we also talked through some scenarios of identity-based harm. It could be graffiti, property damage, actual physical violence, harassment, and talking through as a group, how how could we collectively respond and best support the affected communities? And I'd say lastly, we, as workshop attendees, worked through what a Needham resilience and response network could look like, who would be the members, how would it operate, when would it get activated? And so we got a lot of good feedback on on the potential Needham response network. That leads us to our next steps, which the planning committee is going to meet and review all of the workshop attendee feedback, compile that all into one draft document, and we will be sharing that back with this board for further discussion and review. So happy to answer any questions.
Does anybody have any questions for Katie King? Dan Matthews.
I just, I, I was there, so I know I don't have any questions because they were answered, but I just want to thank Kate and particularly Katie for all the work that she did. There was a lot of coordination of a lot of people to get to get this thing organized. And, you know, we did have Nicole and 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 her agency and and people from the community groups helping, but Katie really tied it together and made it really work very smoothly and was a big help.
Thank you, Dan. I thought that the intellectual framework for that discussion was powerful. And especially when coupled with the ability of people to talk to each other in the small groups. I think we're gaining the ability to talk about these issues in a way that we haven't imagined. So it's a step forward. Thank you for your work. Mary Ann? Are you on mute?
I would just say, also echoing the thanks to everybody who organized it. I think it was powerful in being able to actually meet some new people and get to know some other people in town that I hadn't actually worked with before, so may have known who they were and what their names were, but hadn't worked directly with. And so to the extent that that's part of the network for resilience that we're building, the commitment of these 51 people to being there every week and to being ready to take an action is really helpful and and understanding at least a potential framework for that. And I do think coming back out and responding to the group, you know, based on their feedback will be very helpful for all of us.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thanks, Katie. Thank you very much. Kate, floor is still yours.
Two more items, Mr. Chair. The first is, I wanted to solve a mystery. If you were wondering who planted the wonderful floral arrangements in front of town hall, and I ran into Joey Quinnon and it wasn't him. We've been trying to figure it out. As it turns out, it's our dear friend, John Cosgrove, who is also our MWRA representative. And so we will be sending him a card and I want to publicly thank him because I have received so many compliments on them and we really didn't know who did it. So we're so grateful that local residents and business owners are stepping up to use their skills to help the town. So I think the common looks fantastic. I would note that Sandy and Amy and their team really worked in the Public Works Department, really worked very hard to make the area very festive this year, and so it looks great.
Mary Ann has a question.
Can we just comment? So on the common, since you mentioned the common, the tent did come down and there were a number of people who are very sad to see the tent go. It will come back, but I do just want to confirm for people that the tables will stay there. Because there was a concern, somebody actually said to me, so the tent's gone, so now I guess the tables are going too. The tables will stay there barring some deep snow that covers up all the tables. If there is a lovely sunny day, by all means, go out there and have your lunch and go to one of our downtown restaurants and pick it up and enjoy it outside in the fresh air. So they will stay there for people over the winter. So thank you to Sandy, who continues to work with people as they come in with requests and to Amy, who just got out of the parking too. But speaking of the common.
Thanks, Mary Ann. Anyone else? Thanks, Kate. The floor is still yours.
Yes, I have one more. And, Mr. Chair, just a little bit ago, I think it was just last week, no, maybe it was the week before, you had a meeting with the many, many other boards about the town's COVID response. And we talked about the different phases of our campaign to remind people to to wear masks, to stay separate and to have small gatherings. And Cindy has been working very hard with a company called the Hamel Design out in Western Mass. And I just wanted to give you a sense of some of the things you might see in the first phase. So Sandy, can you show the first PDF? So, Mr. Chair, these are some, this is the example of Needham Needs You is the subject of our campaign. And essentially, Back to Normal is up to everybody. So that these are logos and window decals that we might be able to offer, for instance, to businesses or to residents. And so that portion of the campaign is still being worked up. And then the next one, Sandy. And some sandwich board ideas. I love these. Be boring today, so we can, you know, be crazy tomorrow. The whole notion of these is to have sacrifice today so that we can do the things that we really want to do next year. Sandy, if you could just show some of the, some of the ideas that other communities have used, and we are really still exploring whether this is something we can do. They are using them wrapping trash barrels so that there's a way to put out the message without adding more street furniture. Our barrels are are angled, so we're still working on whether this is something we're going to be able to do. But this is the first phase of our campaign. The, I think it's important to note as we talked about at that meeting, that we we're continuing to reinforce that masks need to be worn and when they need to be worn. We're asking people to gather in as small as groups as possible and to stay in their own units. And to really think about the impact of our actions. We may be carriers of the virus and asymptomatic, and we can expose people who we we do so unintentionally, who could be very much harmed by that. So we, there were a lot of good ideas at your meeting about what this campaign might be like. And I think this is a great way to get started and I'd be happy to answer any questions. So if anything, you can stop sharing.
Can I also, I have another question after Matt's question. I'm going to go last. Go ahead.
Sure, I, I think it's a good idea in some respects. I just the stay home aspect to it. I don't know, we have kids going to school and we're trying to go out and promote going and having curbside shopping and having indoor or outdoor dining and possibly indoor. I just think the stay home is just a little much from my point of view, but I agree with the mask up and they keep your circle small, so.
So I think, and maybe we'll target them to certain groups. I mean, I think the stay home so we can go to school tomorrow is, you know, don't don't go to a party of 50 kids or, you know.
Different than.
That kind of stay home. So yes, we can look at that.
Thanks. This is segue, Kate. I think there was an announcement today from the governor with respect to phasing. Do we have any information on that?
Sure, we're, we're stepping back, the comments are stepping back as of Sunday to Phase Three Step One, I believe it is. The, the major impacts are outdoor gatherings is down from 100 to 50. The capacity for a lot of facilities such as gyms and offices has gone from 50 to 40. There are some gyms like trampoline parks that are completely closed. There's some restaurant implications where seating is down from a 10-person party to six and there's a 90-minute limit. And I think those are, Mary Ann might have another one.
All right, Mary Ann. You're still muted.
When you're eating in a restaurant, you need to be masked until you eat and until you drink and then immediately thereafter. The other thing that I think is critical is although there was the reduction to 50, there's a note that if you were to have an outside gathering that's greater than 25, you have to register with your local Board of Health.
How would somebody who was planning an event on the common say? How would they know that?
We tell them.
So that, yes, they're planning an event, they contact the town so that we would let them know.
So when the, when the rule was 100, we would be doing a lot of thinking about whether what the size of the area was and whether it was reasonable to expect that there would be fewer than 100. I think it was easier when it was 100 than with 50. So I think we'll
All right, thank you.
More difficult for future events.
Thank you. Do you have anything else, Kate?
That's it.
Thank you very much. That brings us to board discussion. We have a committee report from Nuari and also a discussion of 40B guidelines and general housing policy, not just 40B, but some of the discussions that we've had of late has revolved around the document addressing 40B, but that's not the only housing policy that we deal with in the town. So I'd like to ask Dan Matthews if he would elucidate some of the issues that are being discussed around housing.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Sandy will put up these, I've got a few slides that I hope are helpful here. The, this started out in 2012, the Select Board and other town agencies in an effort to kind of make be clear about work on a, on a then contentious issue which had to do with applications for development under Chapter 40B, which is a statute that allows a construction of affordable housing under certain rules that are largely exempt from local zoning requirements. That we did this to establish rules that would be be clear so that developers, town agencies and people in affected neighborhoods and the general public would all know how the town was approaching this. A critical issue in that was that we set the goal of achieving a 10% countable S housing under the state's SHI inventory, subsidized housing inventory. This is known that subsidized, this is, gets to be a complicated subject pretty quickly. The subsidized housing in inventory is not all subsidized housing. It includes rental housing that's part of affordable apartment developments built under 40B that have the statutory affordable units. that have the statutory affordable units in it, which are rent-controlled, means-tested units. And the reason for counting them is that those market, those other units are market units, but they effectively, they provide the subsidy that makes the makes the complex work and makes the the rents workable for the for the affordable tenants. But the goal was to make that ten percent, which at that point, only a small minority. It's been a public policy for fifty years in the state, but only a small minority of Massachusetts communities had achieved it. We did make that goal. And so one of the just of that, it was in two thousand twelve, was to come back and do an update of this document to see what sort of next steps under this particular, under the forty B policy we might pursue, as well as a lot of what I would refer to as ministerial steps, such as one of the areas where a lot of the forty B development went, used to be called the industrial park, and now it's called Needham Crossing. So we needed to make changes as simple, as simple as that, as well as thoughts about how development and policy should should be done in Needham. Change over the years, it made sense to get that together. I had undertaken as part of the goal, you know, as sort of a spin-off assignment from the from the from this board's goal-setting meetings to do an initial cut of a draft of that. One of my reasons for taking that on, as I said, it was largely a clerical job. And but and avoided burdening the staff with that responsibility, which they have a lot more to do. We took that initial draft that I wrote, completed in September, and the town manager circulated it widely among stakeholder agencies, which include all the town boards involved with development issues and reaching out to the Board of Health, the School Committee, because they're affected by school enrollments, the Housing Authority, the Human Rights Committee, and others. We got, as well as the Planning Board, which has a key role in all of this. We got a lot of feedback from that. And one, some of the thoughts were both some 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 very helpful comment of things that just need to be written into the document. For example, Karen Sonnenborg pointed out, we have a significant number of ownership affordable units in our in our mix. Those are all subject to some very clear statutory and regulatory rules on resale to allow some equity growth, but not windfall profits to the sellers because they continue to be marketed, limited to affordable prices, and limited as to who they can be sold to, to people that are within the eighty to one hundred AMI range. So it made sense, and and there have been problems as we've gone on in years, and these properties are starting to turn over. People have forgotten about these limits, and it's really clear that they know upfront because it can be very frustrating for a homeowner who wants to sell and finds out that there are some rules that they may have just sort of thought that was something in the pile of papers when they bought, but it's something that's really binding, and it's an important public policy and has to be followed. So those kinds of things were helpful, but there were some other broader goals that really would require this and other stakeholder boards, or maybe even town meeting, to weigh in on, to really make them into town policy. As well as it became clear that there were a lot of the stakeholders that were unaware that we even had the guidelines or how the forty B fits into the overall housing policy of the town and the state. And and it seemed to make a lot of sense, and and yes, in fact, that's not unreasonable because this was, the the document we're working off was written eight years ago. There's been quite a bit of turnover and change and new ideas coming in. And so it seemed to make a little bit of sense to take a step back and try to just basically frame some of these issues so that we could have some common language to talk about going forward. And 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 I'm going to take a few minutes doing this, if I may, Mr. Chairman, but I I can only tell you that as I've worked on trying to come to to do this, housing policy in Massachusetts is important, it's complicated, it affects people's lives, livelihoods, aspirations, economic development, communities, taxes, public services, a full range. And it is complicated by the fact that the core agencies for planning in Massachusetts are the are the local zoning boards. Well, in our in our eastern Massachusetts region, the MAPC region, which is basically the four ninety-five boundary roughly, but a little bigger than that, but that 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 area contains one hundred and one zoning boards. And there are, and there are a lot of incentives for them not to 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 take on burdens that they'd rather have others take on. And it gets it gets very difficult to try to frame regional policy when it's when there's a lot of what's best, when the priority of each board is what's best for my city or town. So a good starting point to look at this is to talk about we and Mo and I went yesterday, actually, to a very good presentation at which one of the the experts really.
John was there as well, Dan.
Pardon me?
John was also.
John was there as well. Very good. I don't mean to leave anybody out. And in fact, everybody can get in the pool before we're done because there's plenty to do. But one of the speakers really emphasized the point that people talk a lot about the problems of affordable housing in Massachusetts and the shortage, that you really, that there are two components, elements of that. They're related, but they are not the same. One is a shortage of subsidized affordable housing, and another which but which is government subsidized funding, which and that's how, by and large, or subsidized from some other agency, so that the price, the the purchase price or the rents can be held down and made affordable to people of modest means. The second is market affordable housing. This is housing that's in the ordinary supply and demand market. This is what housing, affordable housing in Needham was fifty or fifty years ago and brought a lot of the of current residents and their successors here. But that is increasingly in short supply. One of the, I'm dwelling on this a little bit, though, because when people, and including senior policymakers, talk about affordable housing, they frequently switch the these, the 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 subject, they use the term affordable housing to cover both categories. My opinion, and I think that was reflected by the speaker yesterday, is that that use of language really complicates the discussion and makes it very hard for the ordinary citizen or layman or resident to get a handle on on to understand these issues because they they really aren't the same. The the key issue with subsidized affordable housing is the absence of subsidy, which up until the nineteen eighties came primarily, from World War II to the nineteen eighties, primarily came from the federal government and to a lesser extent from the state. That includes things like Section Eight rentals and pretty much all of the funding that built the three hundred units that make up, three hundred-plus units that make up the Needham Housing Authority. In nineteen sixty-nine, Chapter Forty B, which we've spoken a little about, was introduced to be a supplement to that programming. But what has happened since is that that forty B tool, which is, and as I'll talk about, it's a tool that has some value and can produce some housing, but it is highly imperfect and limited. The federal and state funding has largely been withdrawn from this area and has stayed out. And the public and 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 policymakers have relied largely on Chapter Forty B to build new subsidized housing. This has not worked well. That's the second problem in this area that we had to get away from. Market affordable housing is really based on the problem, it's a regional shortage in eastern Massachusetts, and it's based on the a supply and demand imbalance. The demand for housing greatly exceeds the supply. And restrictive zoning, as we've talked about, limits that limits that supply. And and it's very hard to make changes, again, in a situation in which the individual towns are all looking out for their own particular, their own issues and perceptions and and resistance to development. And resistance to development isn't just, to me, I think that to call that nimby is a is a little bit on, is somewhat unfair in many cases. These are, this is not an irrational response. People moved out of the cities and into what are now the suburbs to have more space, to live in less dense populated areas. They relied on the zoning to protect that. Increasing housing adds costs. We had, when we were talking under our 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 tax hearing, people were talking about the the rising tax burden. We're looking now, if you if you increase housing, you are probably at some point going to increase school costs, which is reasonable because if kids are going to come to live in the town, they need to be able to get a good education here. But we're already looking, say, just to cite our example, at three hundred million dollars in proposed school construction just for our existing and recently constructed housing and and the expected residence in over the in the coming years. So other communities are living, there, yes, there's some state money that comes in to to sup- to supplement that, but it's relatively small compared to the long-term burden on on the town. And frankly, people just don't like change. That's a human basic, it's true everywhere, and it's true in all of these communities. So it's not unreasonable. On the other hand, a stalemate doesn't work either. The continued shortage drives up the price of market housing faster than the cost of living, faster than wages. And it's become, it's a real hardship for people, particularly for people that are that are newer rate residents, lower and moderate income folks, people that are entering into the housing market and are not and don't have a lot of a lot of down payment resources to bring in with them. So you really, we need to make some some progress here. I want to look next at Chapter Forty. So this is the problem. I want to look at Chapter Forty B next on as to how this fits in, and it goes to my point of saying forty B is part of this, but it is a smaller element, and there are some other things that we may really need to make sure we're addressing both regionally and locally. But just to summarize, what is Chapter Forty B? It's a law that allows developers to bypass most zoning, which is the restrictive, it's, you know, we look, for example, where the Modera is now. That's a hundred and sixty unit, thirty-six units on six and a half acres of land in acre-unit-zoned part of town. So instead of six, there's a hundred and thirty-six. That gets you a lot more development. The the basic math of how those developers do that work under the under the statute is that one quarter of the units are means-tested SHI units, which means that they are, they are, they you, you are means-tested, they're, you are limited. I believe it's eighty to a hundred percent of of the area median income is 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 the required income to have to 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 move in there. There, that rent is actually adjustable over time if your income, if your income goes down. The because those there, those units are in short supply regionally, there is basically a lottery process for applying to them, so it is a very controlled process. The other three quarters are market housing. Though the market, the profit, effectively, the profit, the mechanism, because where is the federal funding that supports this, these subsidized housing? The market units subsidize the how the the subsidized units. And 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 that's that's the that's the business model. The advantages of this is this, this builds a fair number of subsidized housing units across the state over time. And in the absence of of state and federal funding for actually building, funding the direct construction, this is basically the largest tool that the state has had. The disadvantages are that unless there is agreement with the town exactly where and what to build, notwithstanding the zoning exemption, these projects can involve intense opposition, litigation, additional cost delays, uncertainties, and many of them fail entirely. It is an extremely, even for the goal of building affordable housing, it is a very inefficient model for doing for doing the work. And one of the offshoots of that, and we've seen this here where we did build by agreement for the most part, is that the market units themselves end up being priced at above what would be considered market affordable rates in the community. For example, there's a, there are a fair number of apartments available generally in Needham. The typical rent is about two thousand dollars in many, in many cases. And I don't want to be held to the detail of that, but that's a good back-of-the-envelope number. At the at the Modera, at the Kendrick, that figure, to my knowledge, is approximately thirty-seven hundred dollars a month. So that you get additional housing, and just the addition of housing is is helpful. And the presence of the fact that it's all rental housing is important because because people coming into the market, they don't have to make a down payment on a, to to buy in order to move here. So there are many benefits to it, but it's expensive and inefficient. It really should not be the town's primary tool to address affordable housing issues now that we're at a point where we're not obligated to use it. That doesn't mean you don't use it at all. In advance, it can be used very well, I think, in special cases that are that in, for one reason or another, a little bit unique. For example, we have approved a forty B at the Daystar property on on Great Plain Avenue. And in a certain sense, it makes a lot of sense because they needed extraordinary zoning relief and over to do the 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 project. There was general agreement in the community that it was that those apartments for which are targeted at at seniors and empty nesters were going to be a positive addition to the neighborhood. But to have to go in and do a separate rezoning for a single three-quarter acre parcel didn't, wouldn't, would have been a pretty difficult lift or or a lot of a lot of resources for that one, for that one project. So it has a role, but it's a smaller role. And we, there are some other areas that we ought to look at. And I would ask, Sandy, if you put up the next slide. This is just, this is not an exhaustive list of of housing initiatives. But they are, these are some local ones, and I'll talk a little bit before I get to the local about some, about state and federal. Housing is a regional problem. If you, if you just build more units in one of these hundred and one towns, it becomes, and we love our neighbors, and we had our meeting with with the chamber yesterday, but you just become more like Newton, which has its own problems of overbuilding and 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 lack of affordability. You just build in one place. It's got to be spread out with enough units over enough of the region that the the price is not set by the maximum, the the it's always going, the market units are always going to sell at the maximum that the that the that the developer can get for them. But if there are enough units and an adequate balance between supply and demand, that price comes down to be closer to the actual cost of the units. That's the goal of of people like the folks that we talked to yesterday. We're trying to lay out some plans how you could get a significant increase in market affordable housing in in this area. You have to do it with enough supply that it doesn't simply become a small number of units that are marked up steeply in a seller, in a seller's market. So this is, this requires some kind of action, presumptively either at the state or by some kind of regional agreement involving a large number of the communities within the region in order, in order to add to the market affordable units. On the subsidized units, I'm a partisan Democrat, so the answer is pretty simple. You need to get back to the levels of federal and state funding that we had a generation ago when it was, this was, when public housing was understood to be infrastructure, just like bridges or roads. We've got three hundred and thirty units. And the most, the newest ones are in our, in Needham's Housing Authority, which is a separate agency from the town government, but it serves the people here and serves the region. Three hundred and thirty-nine units, almost all of them are forty years old or more. They need code compliance work, they need renovation. And because they were built at a time when the standards were for less density on, even on the lands that they were built on, there is room on Needham Housing Authority property. there is room on Needham Housing Authority property to um, add a measurable number of units without adversely impacting, creating a field of, of excess density or anything of that nature. Um, but the dollar cost of this is very high. Massachusetts has a budget, does have a capital budget to help its housing authorities, um, which mainly operate based on the fact that they have existing facilities that were built and they get rent, the, the uh, income-based rents from their tenants. But they do have additional funds, about ninety million dollars a year statewide. The cost of this work that I'm talking about in Needham alone approaches a hundred million dollars of capital work. And, and we also contribute here to it. We're setting three hundred thousand dollars a year aside through our, through our um, community preservation funding, which doesn't sound like a lot, but it will help because this provides the seed money that the housing authority can then use to cobble from a wide range of programs that are out there, some states, some federal, some private, some tax base uh, that, that can help. But the simpler thing would be for the, for the, for the federal government to step up in the way that they, that it did in the years from World War Two to nineteen eighty to see, to see to this. The problem is, once something's been taken out of the budget, um, it's awfully hard to be put, to put it back in. And we've now gone a couple of generations and we now have a lot of people that just, it, it wouldn't even, it seems to me to occur to them that this is something that should be a public priority. But we have, we have, they're, it, it's easily recognizable when you break it down like this. And it needs, it needs to be addressed. So those are the, and the same is true on the section eight vouchers, which are the vouchers that are given to people that basically allow, that low-income people, that basically allow them to rent at, at fair market value in, in, in housing, in, in their, in, in the region. Um, this again, it depends on the, the annual appropriations, both at the federal and state level for that are way down uh, compared to what they were years ago. And they compound the problems that we have. When you're looking though, but those are bigger picture things that would be a big help, but we don't control those. So what, if anything, can we do, we do here? I've, I've cited a few, and this is not an all-inclusive list. A major thing to note about this list, though, is that most of the principal responsibilities or, or boards that are in charge are other agencies. And it is not our particular planning board and housing authority. It is not the job of this board to tell them what to do. But if they're interested in pursuing these things, there are things that we can do to be supportive, to, in our usual way, to provide constructive criticism and also to, to help, to help bring resources uh, to, to these problems. Um, the downtown, the downtown village zoning, which we did twelve years ago and really hasn't taken shape. We all know some of the complicated things about the small parcels, the parking limitations and other thing, and just inertia that it's kept that from happening. But it's worth taking another look at. And I think if we got, if we, if we really said this, this should be a goal for us, that might help. That seat goes to a lot of things about denser development within walking distance of the train station, support for our retail community and everything else. Um, it may, as this program we went, that, that three of us were at yesterday discussed, there's reason to look at whether or not we might want to. Um, it might make sense to increase the amount of, of general residence, which means two-family or other multifamily housing that's available uh, in town, maybe expanding some of the existing areas that we allow that, that in. Um, we just did the new, the accessory apartment bylaw last year, which we um, we both recognize as a new program, we need to see how, how it works. We adopted it intentionally in a very, in a pretty, in, in a pretty restricted manner compared to some other communities. Um, but I think the idea is that we will look at it and, and open it with, and that the idea is that if it's, if, if we can, we can do it in a way that's good for the community, open that up in terms of, of, of liberalizing some of the rules going forward. It's worth looking at. And then again, as I've talked about, the Needham Housing Authority's project, when you talk about, we talked about, for example, the um, the forty B projects where we've done, where we, and, and, and it's true for some smaller homeownership projects where you um, add a certain, you know, three or in uh, uh, affordable units and nine luxury units in order to make, in order to make the thing work economically. Um, if you go to the Needham Housing Authority and add units there, every, one hundred percent of them are S H I affordable units. We do an upgrade of those three hundred and thirty, if the town, if the housing authority is able to do an upgrade of its three hundred and thirty-nine existing units, that's a huge benefit for a, 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 a population that can greatly use that help. Um, but that's a big cost item. Um, and it's the, the, the housing authorities, the lead authority on that, but we, we have a role in it. So some of the, and, and the bottom lines on this are a couple of things. One, this is a regional problem. No town can solve it by itself. Um, one thing that should be not noted is, in terms of how the different communities have acted, Needham has been ahead of most of the other comparable communities in the region of working on these, on these issues. And some people say, well, why don't you say that more when people are criticizing and saying you're, you're, you're not doing enough? Because we're trying to do the right thing. It's not a matter of patting ourselves on the back. We're doing the best we can to address a difficult problem in a serious way. And we have made, we're making some, we've made some prob, progress. It's, so local actions can help. We need to be thoughtful and careful about how we do this. In addition, I've gone through this whole discussion without once, without specifically talking about the issue of race equity. But the fact is that one of the goals of all of this is to, the town in Needham is in the process of becoming integrated, which is um, it's a good thing. Uh, and it's going to help us going forward and it's going to be a great help to everybody that lives here. Um, there are some, but a lot of these housing initiatives are, are, are intended to help open this up and lower barriers to, to entry to newer, to newer people coming in, coming into the community. Um, everything, and we've specifically worked to make sure that these unit, these apartment buildings that we've added with, with our larger developments, over a hundred units, are all complying with the fair housing laws. You may have seen that there have been spot surveys in other areas that have found some big developers. They signed off on fair housing, but they haven't lived by it. Um, that's not so here. We're following the rules and we're trying to make sure that this works out, works out the right, the right way. Everything is viewed through the race equity lens as we work on this. So that's to provide a summary. Um, I think we have a law, we, we have, we've made progress, we have a lot more to do. But I hope that this is a helpful report, Mr. Chairman, to you and the members of the board.
Thank you much, very, thank you very much, Dan. Uh, I mean, the takeaway is this is a highly complicated issue. It is a regional issue. And we are actively working as a community. And there are other boards that have major responsibilities, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals to some extent, and the housing authority. Uh, but we are interested in the subject and we will continue to push for equitable housing in Needham. Um, Mr. Bullion.
Uh, thank you, Dan. Very good presentation, uh, detailed and, uh, you know, well thought out. I, I, I think that, you know, all of us have made a commitment to increasing housing and increasing subsidized housing over the past number of years. And that's evidenced by the, the growth of the, of the forty B apartment complexes. And, uh, and, and, you know, we are very supportive of additional housing all around town. And we're also supportive of affordable, affordable, uh, having affordable percentages within those that housing around town. Dan, one comment, though, getting back to, uh, you, you, you know, referencing uh, Modera on Greendale and, and the, the price of the market units. I, I guess the only thing I'd say is that, you know, obviously, these, these developers that come in and that we've all worked with for the past number of years, um, you know, they're coming in with their eyes open. They know that they're going to, if they're going to, um, look to do a project that incorporates twenty-five percent affordability, that the market rate units have to support that. Now, I, you know, I think that what you, what I heard you say, if I understood it correctly, is that it's above market. I mean, I maintain that, you know, one of the things that we always looked at is, how will they get those rents? You know, when they have presented their proposals to us, I think all of us have sat back and said, that's an unbelievable amount of money on a monthly basis for the market units. And yet they all seem to be filled, all of them. And they're all at high prices. And the only thing that I can, I mean, clearly, they know their business and they know where their market is. And clearly, if it's a five thousand dollar a month rental, which I think all of us find really crazy expensive, there are many people, they have a market that will, that will rent that. And so that is the market. So they, you know, so I, I think it's, it, what amazes me is that the market rate, the larger market rate units in the Kendrick and Charles River Landing and Modera are being rented. My understanding is that there is, there is a very small vacancy rate or has been. Um, and, and it's just, it's amazing the amount of money that is available and the comfort that people have with renting at that level of cost.
Well, I think, John, if I may, it's not that they're comfortable, it's that there is a housing shortage in this region that's predicted to be between two hundred and four hundred thousand units in the next several years. So the, the lack of supply means that if you want to live in commuting distance of Boston, you have to pay a very high rate. It's a function of demand.
Oh, I, I understand that, but.
And, but the person, if I didn't let you finish.
Yeah.
The presentation yesterday talked about it on a regional basis because unless you radically in, in, increase the supply over the region, the market is not going to become more reasonable for people of moderate or even a medium income. So it's, it's a very complicated and very challenging problem and has been for decades.
Oh, oh, I agree with that, Mo. I, I think that, I think the con, the, the observation that I make is that, is that market rate rents in the larger units of these complexes that might, might be renting at five and six thousand dollars a month.
Yeah.
People have to have significant incomes to support that. And people that are renting at that level, I, I guess I would question that those individuals in the market rate high-end cost units are, are housing challenged? Because if you have five to six thousand dollars a month to spend, you do have many options even in this region. If not, you know, and if not in Needham for lack of a down payment, there is NADIC, there is DEDOM, there are other communities, there are other housing opportunities that, that would present themselves for less than that on a monthly basis.
Sure. I'd like to recognize that our state representative Denise Garlick is uh, present at our meeting and may have some, something she may want to say with respect to this issue. Or not, depending. Denise, uh, are, would you like to say anything?
So I, I want to thank Dan for um, that outstanding presentation. And to say I share with the Board of Selectmen our concern around housing. I appreciate that it's regional. I know that there's a role for the state to play in it as well. And in my work in our town and at the state level related to housing, not only do I think about affordable housing and subsidized housing, but I'm deeply committed to the work of the Needham Housing Authority and always recognize the Charles River Center and the number of group homes fully integrated into our community, strengthening our community is also very helpful in our work. So thank you, Mo.
And thank you for coming and thank you for sharing with us. Um, Matt.
Charlie. And thank you, Representative Garlick. Um, and thank you, Dan, for that great, robust presentation. Just a couple of comments that I have that are kind of over the place because it was following the presentation, different areas. Number one, I want to see us focus on, and our forty B guidelines are very focused on rent in order to get to that ten percent. I have friends that live on Linden Street and those, the developments where it's homeownership and work in town and able to get, you know, equity in there and have a stake in Needham. So as we move forward, I want to concentrate or look to, to look into ownership. I know that there are first home buyer programs that you can put three percent down for these units. So the barrier to entry is not as great for some of these that, that you might think it is when there are loan programs out there. Um, we have to look at our zoning where we have general residents kind of end. There are areas in town where you look at streets and you go, look at the zoning map and it comes to an abrupt end where if you keep going down the road or the area, you'd be like, you know, you could, you could have had maybe multifamily zoning here or two-family zoning. The issue that you run into is if you have an existing two-family and you tear it down, you're going to have two expensive units that aren't marketable that you're going to sell. So you have to incentivize the developer and say, okay, you can have either two big units there or you can have four, but one has to be affordable. So, or you can have six and two have to be affordable. And there are areas of town where you could do that. Same with single-family pre-existing non-conforming. Where you have a two-family that was built in the forties or fifties, you tear it down. It's not grandfathered because it doesn't go back to twenty-seven. So therefore, that two-family is now converted into a large single family. There should be an incentive saying, okay, to a builder, if you want to keep that two-family grandfather zone, you can do it, but you're going to have to deal with some type of restriction on that. But again, you have to incentivize the development to do that. Um, I've dealt with LIP projects in different towns. One of the issues clearly for me is that the hardest units to rent are the affordables. Why? Because the restrictions that are put on, that they can only make a certain amount of money versus, okay, well, you can make, you can't make too much, but yet you have to be able to afford the unit. So the restrictions that are put on, I, I actually dealt with a divorced couple, they were getting divorced. And she was seen as a single person um, with a child, so that her income was too great. They didn't see her as, you know, a family of, of three anymore, which then she would have qualified. I think it's very restrictive on the state level to get people to actually qualify for these units. I dealt with people on the sale as well, with the affordable units. It's a very narrow margin to be able to qualify to afford these units, but then not make enough money to get kicked out. So uh, my last point is, if you look at the SRA zoning, um, land acre zoning, are there areas where, we had someone come to us, I remember years ago, saying they wanted to do kind of a cluster type.
Right.
Right? Something to do there, but you have to, as a town, say, okay, they're unable to say, okay, well, here's what's the, here's what the rate's going to be for these units. You have to say, yeah, we'll give you that, we'll allow that type of cluster, allow subdivision in this area. But in order for that to happen, these, they have to be market plus, almost like an affordable market plus. And you can only make so much profit when the homeowner sells. These are just ideas that I've, I've dealt with in my kind of professional life. Um, and the last point, I get, I think we all agree, upgrading and federal money for, you know, our, our subsidized housing.
Yes, and if I could just latch on to one point you made, Matt, because it's a really crucial point. For people who are low and moderate income, who don't have net worth, it's, a lot of it is because they aren't able to own. The biggest source of personal equity, a personal net worth is homeownership. And so a significant portion of the financially challenged part of our communities, and I, with that N S, doesn't have that opportunity. And I, I think you're getting at that, a lot of what you're saying.
No, absolutely. And I will say again, with those, the twenty-five percent, you know, it's, it's for you. I think it's things that even on the town level, we wouldn't subject people to do, you know, X years of tax returns, this document, that document, let me see your retirement. There's just so much that goes into it. I've even seen people drop out, be like, it's too cumbersome. I'm eighty years old, it's too cumbersome, you know, my son's filling it out for me, too cumbersome. So just, I know it's a small area of it, but I think if we really want to talk about affordability and able to get into these units, we have to try to make it as least restrictive as we can for people that will qualify and want to live here. So large problem, I think rezoning, we have to look at um, in certain areas and then incentivize, you know, multi-units uh, on a lot where, where we work. Thank you.
Anything you want to add?
So, um, all this is great. Thank you, Dan, for that presentation. And of course, all of this came from your So, all this is great. Thank you, Dan, for that presentation. And of course, all of this came from your starting with trying to update something as a ministerial act, just to update the forty B guidelines. I think when they went out, when you sent them out, it really triggered because there's such interest in the community, all these other thoughts. And, and really that document itself was not intended to represent the select board or the town's goals for housing. As, as we've shown tonight, it's a much, much broader discussion than just the forty B guidelines and the, and the way that those do need to be updated today compared to eight years ago. So, and even after tonight and all these things coming on the table, that's, this still isn't our goals discussion. This was a committee report discussion. And at some point, we will have a goals discussion to figure out, in fact, what the next goals will be and how we can partner with the various boards in town that do have jurisdiction and responsibility for helping to bring these ideas to fruition. The one thing we all know is there's not a fast fix. And I think there's lots of people who will say, you just rezone the whole town and, and the problem is done, the town becomes affordable. And the answer is it's just not that simple as we see by the apartments and the condos being built that are being built at what, what I think Dan referred to as above market affordability. But in fact, as John noted, people seem to be affording them. And therefore people keep building them at that price. So it's a, it's a complicated problem.
Thank you. Thank you for championing this effort, Dan. And thank you for, I know you put a lot of work into this and, and the presentation as well. It's an education and I think it's important that we discuss this from time to time. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mary Ann, that brings us to your portion of the committee report agenda. And can I say something before you start?
Sure.
I had the privilege of, as does anybody, of watching the YouTube of the Monday's meeting. And I, I was moved by the quality of that discussion. And the way people are beginning to be able to talk to each other about these very uncomfortable issues. And I, I think a lot of that has to do with your leadership and Matt's presence on the committee. So.
Well, I, I think we have a phenomenal committee, actually, and that committee has worked to trust each other and to make some difficult comments by a number of people, all kinds of people on the committee, actually. It's interesting to me at every meeting that everybody ends up speaking and making some critical points. And that level of participation will bring us to a better product overall. Having said that, I actually thought I would have more to report to you tonight than, than I do. We, we spent last night on our second meeting talking about a vision to guide the work. And as you noted, Mo, Mo, those discussions have actually been very rich, and I would encourage people to listen to those discussions about how people think about this problem in our community and what the vision should properly be to guide the work going forward. We had hoped to, in the range of things we were doing, to, to maybe coalesce more quickly on a vision, but the answer is getting the vision right is highly important. We are going to take the time to do it right. So we have spent two sessions. I don't have something to, to give the community or to give you to review yet. But we expect to get to that. And at the point where the committee has a draft available to offer, it will come back to this board and it will go out to the community for everybody to comment on. We had hoped last night to also take up some initial feedback from the chief looking at policing because in fact, the committee is very anxious to get started on, on the rest of the work beyond a vision. And to get to their number five in their charge, which is to be able to make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen before the May town meeting. That did not happen because we spent the whole session focused on the vision. And so we will, in fact, be rescheduling the chief, hoping to bring him back still this year and, and do some shuffling and lay out a whole agenda for people that guides our work from now till April. Katie has done some work actually, starting to lay out some initial pieces and we're sort of moving some of the puzzle around to try to get it all to fit as best as possible between now and then. I want to talk a little bit about some of what was critical to the vision discussion last night. The last or the first vision session that we had, I'm going to lose track of how many weeks ago, Kate, three weeks ago, I believe, because of the way the calendar rolled with Lisa McQueeney Smith. Had a really started from a perspective of thinking about a vision maybe for the town. And the Nawari work that rested within that. I think what it resulted in was maybe a higher level vision than we focused on really last night, which was recognition that the Nawari group existed because of racial injustice and because of a desire to treat people in Needham equitably and fairly across the board and to have everyone have a sense of belonging. So we really talked about what are the key things that need to be in the vision statement for the Nawari work that's specifically focused in that area. I think having the group talk about that and think about what words they're comfortable using and not using in that, in that vision and how people in the town will react to them and how they will, how we can create a vision that helps people to think about the problem in everyone's daily lives. Right? And about the challenges in daily lives as people are going about living and working in the town of Needham. So I think it will be interesting and I look forward to hopefully, hopefully having a draft relatively soon for you. But we're going to go, go and do a couple of pieces of some real work before we sort of come back to the next round, having done two rounds of this right now. Matt, do you want to add to that?
No, I think very well said. I, I think it's a terrific group and, and it's a very robust discussion. It's, there's some, you can agree to disagree and just have, you know, terrific dialogue back and forth. I did get an email today from one of the members and he just commented about Lisa. We had some really well-intentioned discussions last night. Lisa does a great job making us feel okay with being vulnerable and expressing how we feel. I like her. So there is a connection, I think, to Lisa, and I think there's a connection to the group to be able to open up and discuss these really challenging ideas and dialogue. And from what I see, you know, we're getting to a good place and there's a lot of optimism, even in the language used that, that we can get there. So it's been, it's been great.
Lisa has been, was a, a rec, a resource that was recommended to us. So this is the first time that the town has worked with her. And I do think she has been wonderful to work with for the group.
Can you tell us a little bit about her?
You know what, Mo? I am in the hotel, so I do not readily have her bio in front of me. I would if I were sitting at my home computer. I will be happy to do that next time and be prepared with the right information for that.
I did notice a masked man came into the room behind you, a little bit alarmed, but.
Yes, the masked man did come in. Yes.
Thank you. Thanks, Matt, for also participating. That brings us to the end of our known reports. Is there anything else that we need to take up? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
A motion's been made and seconded. We come to the vote. Mary Ann Cooley?
Yes.
John Bullion?
Yes.
Matt Borelli?
Yes.
Dan Matthews?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes. It's unanimous. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. See you in two weeks.
Thank you.